Yes, Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro is absent. Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertoni?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
I'm here, thank you. Our invocation tonight will be presented by Pastor Andre Davis of the Band of Believers. Come on down.
What's happening, young man?
Hey.
First of all, I just want to thank you guys for having me. I have to go to prison tonight, so I won't be here. I go to prison every Tuesday and minister to the people there. So I'm glad to be here, because at first I turned it down not being able to do this, and the Lord immediately told me, "You can do both." So I just want to let you know, I'm here for a reason, and I'm here to pray over you guys. I've been living here for 64 years, and we're the Band of Believers. We go out every two weeks. So if you guys want an invitation, we go out every two weeks for the last four years. And rain or shine, we go out. We come together, because you guys are doing a lot of mighty work in here. But we need to know that they out there, and they know that too, so that's what we're letting them know. But I did a special prayer for us today, and I want to thank you again for letting me be here, but I did a special prayer, so let's pray right now, if we can. I wrote a special prayer. It says, "Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for all your mighty works. You are loving, good, and gracious. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with other people. We thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city a great place to stay in Solano. But Lord, we acknowledge we do not deserve these good gifts. We are not worthy of your favor, for we have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed. We do things what we should not do, and we don't do the things we should do. We have not loved you with all our heart, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. We appeal to the Lamb of God, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. Forgive us and give us hearts of obedience to your holy scriptures. Thank you that Jesus rose from the dead and now reigns as King over heaven and earth. Grant our city to be known as a righteous city, a city that confesses Jesus as Lord, a city of peace and hope, a city with happy homes, a city that welcomes the stranger, a city that cares for the needy, a city that defends the innocent from evil doers. Father God, I thank you that that's Fairfield, California, Father God, Solano County. Lord, thank you for the civil government. Thank you who bear the sword to do so as your ministers to beat terror to crime. I pray that our civil servants would acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully. Be with our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement. Grant them that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but they would stand firm for the truth and justice. Keep them safe from harm as they serve our community. I pray for this city council meeting tonight, Lord. Give the councilmen's wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May even every decision be righteous in your sight for our behalf, for your glory, Lord. We pray that your kingdom come, and your will be done, Lord. I pray a special, special prayer for this meeting tonight, that you just consistently bless them and give them wisdom on what we need to do, Father God, because you are the beginning and the end. Father God, we give you the glory in the mighty, magnificent, massive name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you, and God bless the people you're going to serve now.
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty.
I'll just come out for a minute and pray for the Lord.
Okay. So now, let's see, I think I'll ask the city clerk to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we're going to go into council reports, and I am going to start with Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My report is really short this week. Two things. I was appointed to the Tripartite Advisory Board. That is, the board that advises the GPA Solano Two by Two, the Regional Homelessness Board, that Councilmember Carr and Panduro sit on and already have had an orientation, already have had a tour of Kaminar and conversations about the Solano Resource Connect. You know, I just want to serve in excellence, and to me, that means understanding and information. So I'm on my way. So, thank you for that. And then, my final thing that I wanted to touch on is the Emergency Preparedness Town Hall that we're having in Green Valley. Well, it's going to be in Green Valley, supports Green Valley and Cordelia, but all of the city of Fairfield is absolutely welcome there. Fire Marshal Steve Conti, I see you back there. He is going to be leading us there in emergency response, information, communication. That is going to be Saturday, October 12th, Saturday, October 12th, 10:00 to 12:00. It's going to be at Nilda Monday Elementary School at 570 Vintage Valley Drive. So, thank you, and I'll see you all there.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for serving on the Tripartite Advisory Council. I think that's awesome. That's just great for all of us. Thank you. Councilman Tonison?
Thank you, Mayor. Pickleball, we had our big tournament, and it was fantastic. We got just rave reviews. The courts were really looking nice. People want to come back. People want more courts. So, no, but it was a fantastic event, and shout out to USA Pickleball. They did a fantastic job. And then, I went to the compost giveaway this Saturday, and it was, they were almost empty it. I got there at about 11 o'clock, 11:30. People were waiting in line. They were lined out onto Hill Barn. So, it was a really successful event, and just wanted to give a shout out. That's all for me, Mayor.
That's great. That means that our messages are getting out there really well, so shout out to the teams who are putting our information out. That's great. Councilman Panduro?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everyone. So, a few weeks ago, I know I've mentioned before that I've adopted a part of North Texas in my district, as well as with Fairfield PD. So, I wanted to say, we had a cleanup a few weekends ago with my partners, including Fairfield PD, along with some of their family and some of the staff and some community members. And so, we clean all of North Texas from Travis all the way down to Air Base, and then some side streets like Dover, and then, yeah, we do a big swath. And so, it makes a difference. And so, if you are interested in participating, I'm advocating for more participation in the Adopt a Street program. It really is really helpful to us as a city. But then also, it's a great way to spend time in a morning or an afternoon with your community, with your neighbors. I've met some amazing staff, just doing it, you know, doing it, being a part of it. And I get to meet some residents that are just hanging out, walking on the sidewalks. It's a really fun way to clean up our city and keep our streets clean. So, if you have any questions about how to participate, or if you want to participate in Adopt a Street in your neighborhood, please contact our city clerk, Karen Reese, and she will definitely give you that information. And tomorrow, there is a North Texas Business Street Association meeting, and these meetings are held monthly, and they are for the businesses that reside on the North Texas Business Street. And so, we come together, and we talk about just various issues that they may be facing as business owners and being a business on North Texas. So, it's a great way to come together again and get your questions asked, and then just network with one another. And I think that is all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor? Thank you, Mayor Moy, and thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Thanks for watching from home. It's always a better meeting when you're in here with us. So, thanks for showing up tonight. Just wanted to report on a couple of things. I attended a golf advisory board meeting last Thursday, and I just want to give a shout out to Touchstone. You know, they had a rough start off, but things are improving. And the food is improving at both golf courses. The revenues are going up at both golf courses. The rounds are going up at both golf courses. And I was amazed at how many golfers come from out of town to the city of Fairfield with their disposable income to play at our golf courses. So, things are looking up. I think, in a phrase, they're showing us the beef, I think, at this point. So, I just want to really encourage them, and I look forward to them coming before the city council with a comprehensive update report, I believe, in October. In October, so they'll be giving us a full report. Read the numbers for yourself. Things are looking up. And the Rancho Solano Women's Golfers, they are giving lessons to high school students, lady, young ladies. So, if you are interested, please contact Rancho Solano. They supply both the lessons and equipment for free. So, they are currently giving lessons to young ladies at Armio, Rodriguez, Fairfield High School, and Green Valley Middle School. So, that is an opportunity worth exploring if you know someone or have someone in our Fairfield-Susun Unified School District. So, great job, and looking forward to much, much more to come from our golf courses at Rancho and Paradise Valley. And I also want to say that we're having our monthly Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield Can, meeting next Thursday, the 24th, at 3:00 PM at Willow Hall. We're planning our Fourth Annual Thanksgiving Meal, which is going to be on Tuesday, November 19th, at noon. The more we do these dinners, the bigger they get. So, we're shooting for 80 turkeys at this point, and we have 30 turkeys committed. So, if there are any turkeys out there, I mean, if there are anybody out there who would like to...
Turkey here.
If there's anybody who'd like to donate some turkeys for the event, please contact Kelly Ballard in the city manager's office, and she manages all of that information and makes sure it gets to where we want it to be. So, Madam Mayor, and you can also visit our Clergy Action Network website and find more information there. That is my report. Thank you. Thank you very much. And then, Councilman Doug?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it real short. We do a lot of the same events, so I did go to the pickleball event, and it was awesome, good food. It was just a real good event. But Saturday, I decided to go out later at night and took a ride, and I just want to give a shout out to the staff and to the Fairfield Police Department. I went downtown, and it was just such a nice, the weather was perfect. We have restaurants down there with outside seedings. We had cedars, rust waters, saffron, and people were outside, and the lights, and it was just, we're getting there. It was just so nice to see, and no homeless anywhere. I drive around at night sometimes, just to check things out, and just a real shout out, the police, you guys are doing such a good job. Fairfield's slowly becoming what I'm hoping that it will. We got some lots sailed downtown. We got some staff changes. We're going to really, really bring our town to where I've always hoped it'll be, and I just want to thank everybody for that, and I'm real grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I think, just tag on to that. When I go to the grocery store, so just bear with me a little bit here, I give myself an extra 30, 45 minutes, because I know that people usually stop me when I'm there and ask questions, or... And I visited the grocery store the other day, and a lovely lady came up to me. She said, "Are you the mayor?" And I was like, "Oh, yes, I am, yes." And she said, I thought, "Okay." And I usually get out my phone so I can write down, you know, what the issue is. She said, "I just wanted to tell you that I've been here since 1961." And she said, "You know, I've watched changes over all the years, of course." And I said, "Yeah." And she said, "But it's looking better, and it feels better out there." Because when I go downtown, when I go on North Texas Street, I see a big difference. And I also see that there are fewer encampments, and that they're not there as long. So, she wanted to make positive words to staff, to everybody, all of us, everybody who works on it. And I think that that is, it was wonderful. And she's not the only one, but it was just, it was just nice, because people are noticing the work, and more and more people are volunteering as well. And so, that's one story, and I have a second story, because you don't like to be a storyteller. And this one has to do with a public works employee. And his name is Rick Joyner. And the reason why I'm bringing him up is for kudos. And this is why. A lady wrote this long old thing on Facebook the other day, and I got tagged in it about how in March of this year, she was shopping at Rayleigh's in Susan City, and somebody stole her phone out of her purse. She turned around just for a minute to get some cheese. And so, somebody stole her phone, and she's frantic. She made a police report, all that, and she thought, "Well, that's the end of it. I'm never going to see it again." So, about a week ago, through some detective work, Rick Joyner found this woman. And Rick Joyner works in public works, and one of the things that he does is he cleans up homeless encampments. He found her phone there, as they find a lot of stuff that's been stolen. And it's not part of his job, he said, but when he has extra time, he tries to track down where these things belong. And Rick did it through pictures, saw some, it's kind of a long story, I'm not going to go through all of it, but the bottom line is, this is why our city looks better, because of all the Rick Joyners, because of everybody, and for the citizens who do so much. And so, huge shout out to him. And again, it's not in his job description, but a lot of people do things that are not in their job description. And I want to thank him. And it made this woman, they said, "Please promise that he'll know how thankful we are." And I said, "That's what I'm doing, to let Rick know, and everybody know that they do appreciate you even if they don't call you out by name." So, that's all I have. And Mr. City Manager, how about you?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. So, I just want to say thank you to the Rolling Hills Neighborhood Network. Got an opportunity to go out and meet with that group last night, give them a presentation on just kind of general going-ons with the city, just a general city update. And I would extend that offer to any other community groups that are interested. I'm happy to come out and talk and give an update on the city. There are no changes on the report, and that's all I've got.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Madam Clerk?
I don't have anything to report either. Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty then. So, now, we're going to move on to presentations.
Okay. Presentation one, Proclamation and Poem Declaring Hispanic Heritage Month, presented by Councilmember DeReese Panduro and poet laureate Suzanne Bruce to Pastor Christian Bravo from Liberty Church. And first, we're going to have our poet laureate read her poem. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, audience. At National Hispanic Month, this theme is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together." The theme encapsulates the spirit of innovation, resilience, and unity that define the Hispanic experience. The Federal Housing Finance Agency states, quote, "This theme recognizes all the Hispanics, Latinos who have been trailblazers and game changers, paving the way for future generations." That is why I decided to title my poem, "Trailblazers and Game Changers." Imagine if musical scores were composed as only one style. Even specific sharps and flats could not make melodies dance. Imagine if books had only one look, homogeneous words lacking inclusive identity. Imagine if restaurants served only one kind of food, bland and nameless on tongues. Imagine if art galleries displayed only limited reflections, not those seen from multifaceted hearts. Hispanic... Hispanic, Latino, Latinx Americans, cultural bones inscribed by those who came before, knew of views full of innovation. How their wisdom could be the wind of tomorrow, how dreams need not be silent nor still. Trailblazers and game changers sought the variances in music, the electricity of words, the spices in cuisines, the spirit in the colors of art. They generated the interwoven beauty in community, and for that, we are all richer. Thank you.
Beautiful.
And now, my partner in poetry is going to do it in Spanish.
Hola, buenas noches.
Hola.
Gracias. So, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. So, now, ahora voy a leer la poema en español. Pioneros y agentes de cambio. Imaginas si las partituras musicales se compusieran en solo uno estilo? Incluso los bemoles y estos senidos específicos no pudieran hacer que las melodías bailaran. Imaginas si los libros tuvieran solo una apariencia? Palabras homogéneas, faltas de identidad inclusiva. Imaginas si los restaurantes sirvieran solo un tipo de comida? Incisvida y sin nombre las lenguas. Imaginas si las galerías de arte exhibieran solo reflejos limitados? No aquellos vistos desde corazones multifacéticos. Los hispanos, latinos, latinxamericanos, huesos culturales escritos por aquellos que vinieron antes sabían, de perspectivas llenas de innovación. Como su sabiduría podía ser el viento de la mañana. Como los sueños no necesitan ser silenciosos ni estáticos. Pioneros y agentes de cambio buscaron las varencias en la música. La altercidad de las palabras. Las especias en las cocinas. El espíritu en los colores del arte. Generaron la belleza entrelazada en la comunidad. Y por eso todos somos más ricos. Gracias.
(Applause).
She just read it in English. Did you want a photo with both of us?
Is the gentleman here? Yeah, he's right here.
Well, he used to be in it too.
Yeah.
Well, we'll get the picture now.
Yeah, there you go.
Someone told me that no one was reading the poem in Spanish, that's why.
Oh, thank you.
So, I'm going to now read the proclamation, and as was mentioned earlier, I am presenting it to Pastor Christian Bravo of Liberty Church in Español. And I just want to say, muchas gracias. Pastor Christian does so much for our community, especially the Latino community within our city. He is always in those spaces that are in most need of a safe space, and a shoulder to lean on, and a prayer, and so, I just want to thank you, because you truly are a changemaker in our community, and you're helping our city move forward in just amazing ways. So, thank you. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th, by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas, the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to cover the entire month. It was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988, on the approval of public law. And whereas, September 15th is significant, because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Day on September 16th and 18th. Que viva México! Respectively, also, October 12th is Columbus Day, or Dia de la Raza, which falls within these 30 days. And whereas, more than 15 million Hispanics live in the state of California, the largest racial or ethnic group in the state, and more than 35,700 live in Fairfield, representing 33% of the population. A diverse group with roots throughout Latin America and beyond, many Hispanic Californians also trace their heritage to the original indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor and recognize all in the Hispanic community who helped build our state and city. They are our teachers, business owners, council members, scientists, soldiers, farmworkers, first responders, artists, activists, colleagues, and friends. Hispanic Californians make valuable contributions to our neighborhoods, communities, and every sector of the economy. We are a more excellent and vibrant place because of them. Now therefore, I, Catherine Cat Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, with the 2024 theme of pioneers of change shaping the future together, recognizing the significant achievements of the Hispanic community in economic and political industries. Thank you.
Well, all glory is to God. I remember when I came here to this country in 2010, during Thanksgiving, it was two days before Thanksgiving. And I had a dream in my heart, it's just to, like, there is a radio host that says, "Vinimos a triunfar," we came to succeed. That was his word. And that was my word, you know? We came to succeed in this country. I'm from Venezuela, and right now, it's going to a crisis, but I believe that we can, we came here for a purpose, and is to proclaim, and do good, and change the city. I love Fairfield, I've been living here for a long time, and I believe everything that we do, we do it for our people, for God, and we do it because we believe that there is a great cause. There is, I believe, this award just gives me a push to continue doing what I'm doing. And, so, thankful, thank you, City Council, thank you, Mayor, for giving me this recognition, you know? It's all glory to God, and we will continue making Fairfield a better city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next presentation, Proclamation Declaring Constitution Week, presented by Vice Mayor Pam Bertani to Starla Luna Studer from the Chief Solano Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
No, no, come on over. And thank you for being here. Outstanding blouse. I love it. Very nice. Whereas the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice, embodying the principles of a limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, not by men. And whereas, September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic exercises that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, Public Law Number 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Catherine Cat Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week in the city of Fairfield. Amen! That's worth clapping for. The mayor and the city council urge all citizens to pay special attention during this week of our federal constitution and the advantage of American citizenship. Yeah. My name is, well, first off all, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. I get nervous, I'm going to just tell you straight up.
We're all family here.
Go through it. Okay. I am part of the Solano Chapter, DAR, we're called Chief Solano Chapter. And, one of the reasons why I joined it, I have a patriot, but our vice, our state regent is from our area, from our chapter, for all of California. And her mission this year goes along with yours, is finding those Spanish patriots that participated in the Revolutionary War. And that is a mission she has put in a committee, and we are seeking out the Spanish that had a part, and we are getting ready to sign one of our first patriots in our chapter as we speak. We are so excited to see the difference. DAR was founded in 1890, and we actually own Constitution Hall, and if you've ever been there, it's amazing, because DAR believes in historic preservation, education, and patriotism. And, we spend many hours in service in the community, that is our goal, we're nonpartisan, but we are out there to serve the veterans, to serve the students, to serve the community. And I'm very excited to be a part of that. In 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned to get Constitution Week recognized. And in 1956, Eisenhower drafted it into law. And, we are very grateful to be a part of that rich history. We have millions of service hours, and one of the things we do is we offer scholarships. And, we like to recognize, not just to the girls, but anybody can apply for the scholarships. Last year, from our small chapter, we gave $1,500 in scholarships, and one of the girls that took the first thing got bumped up to state. So, you can get even more, because they were recognized for the state scholarship also. We, it says here, we only have, we have reached the million mark for DAR in our nation of volunteers that give the service hours. Last year, Chief Solano was recognized as number two, as giving some of the most hours in our nation. And, that felt really good, because we like to work out at Travis, we dedicate, we like to get out there to help with them. We recognize Vietnam vets, which is a passion for me, because my dad served in three wars, and Vietnam was one of them. We have welcomed in, I don't know how many Vietnam vets, and given them, welcomed them home, and given them the commemoration pen, there I go with that word. But, and then we go out there, and we support the Sacramento Valley Cemetery. We're getting ready this Thursday for the unaccompanied soldier once again, and giving the honor and the remembrance. I want to thank you guys for recognizing the Constitution Week. We all know how important it is for all of us, and for the freedoms, and I'm one, once again, that really recognized that, because my grandpa was also an immigrant, he came from Mexico. And he became a citizen, and he taught us to love this nation. And, this is how we grew up. We were taught to serve. My cousins and I, we all do this kind of thing. And it was important, he said, "We came from Mexico to be Americans because of the freedom that we're going to get here." And he loves, loved this nation, and he taught us that. And that is why I'm part of the DAR, and I want to thank you guys once again. Thank you so much. Thank you. This were both really good. All right, so tonight, we're going to move on to our public comments now, Madam Clerk, if you would.
Yes. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature if you're online, or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Jeff Trager.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I want to bring you up to date on what's going on at the Downtown Theater and other events in Fairfield. On the 18th of October, we have the Rocky Horror Show, put on by the Missouri Street Theater. On the 9th of November, the Ronstadt Revolution, which is a tribute to Linda Ronstadt. And if you want to hear some great music, get the albums that she did in Spanish, in Español, really. And then, on the 15th of November, Susical Jr., also put on by the Missouri Street Theater. Now, you can get your tickets by going to downtowntheater.com. And then, this Friday, out at Falati Park, we're concluding our Friday Night Music Series. We went out to nine different parks in Fairfield, and I want to give a big thank you to Juanita Johnson from the Park and Rec Department for all her hard work. You go out there, and she helped handpick these parks, and it made a lot of people happy. And I also want to thank David Gassaway for all he's done to make this happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's been another year of success. So, get out to that last one for anybody.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Denise Cicado, to be followed by Lee Sutherland.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Moy, and councilpeople. You can definitely tell the city of Fairfield is looking good.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate it. But, my colleagues and I live in Solano County, and we are volunteers with the United Sovereign Americans. United Sovereign Americans, USA, is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens, sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by highly qualified data teams, using only official data provided by California election officials, indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of that analysis, showing that votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under federal law. We are not here to cast blame or aspersions on any elected official, nor do we advocate for overturning or rerunning any past election. council meeting, where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us.
Hello.
Resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas, it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas, it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, and that's the National Voter Registration Act of 93. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. The U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. And four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, and that's from the Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas, the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was 90. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charlene Phipps, to be followed by Jeffrey Pickarrell.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Charlene Phipps. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas, the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election. Excuse me, I'm nervous.
You're doing great.
Then, that upholds existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Three, handmarked, secure ballots, similar to currency, where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. And number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. And then, number five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker, Jeffrey Pickarrell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members, and members of the public. Continuing where the last speaker left off. Ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody, from voter-to-vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. A national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. If the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved, that the Fairfield City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. And then it goes on, we implore the Solano County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges in both California Secretary of State and county registrars of voters, to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. And that concludes the resolution. So we encourage you all to visit United Sovereign Americans' website to learn more about the organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's at unitefor, the number four, freedom, dot com. And I also encourage all of you to reach out to me personally, I'm the team leader for Solano County. We're gonna be going to most of the other cities in the county and the Board of Supervisors to present this resolution. There are many other volunteers around the state doing the same thing, and this is part of our grassroots strategy in addition to legal action in federal court. So I have a copy, I have eight copies, so that's one for each of you, and the city attorney. So you guys can review that, and we hope very much that you will carefully consider it and think about putting it on the agenda.
Have you been to the Board of Supervisors yet?
We're gonna go Tuesday.
Oh, on Tuesday.
Yeah, we'll go Tuesday morning, and then the week after Benicia, and the week after that, Vacaville, and the week after that, Fairfield.
Yeah, I, I.
Or, I'm sorry, Riva Stott.
Yeah, obviously, you know, the registrar is with the county, but we're, we are all working for all the citizens, so.
Great. Well, I now want to thank you personally, Mayor Moye, for the bold work that you've always done, and I've read a lot about that, to represent the will of the people and the good of the people in this county.
Thank you.
Or in your, in your city.
We all do, we all do.
Thank you so much. You can get those to, okay.
I'm gonna give them to the clerk and show.
Okay. And she will have my contact information via my speaker card. So please, reach out if you'd like to ask any more questions.
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much.
Oh, yes. Councilwoman Williams.
Just for anyone that is, you know, concerned, John Gardner is the Assistant Register, Assistant Registrar, I think it is his title. He is open to any concerns about the, the process from the end to end. I, he, he will allow you to come that day, days before, days after, to see the process from end to end. It's something that I watched and studied, I would bring kids, fellows, to, to come see the process. So, he, he is an open book, just call him, he will meet groups, he will meet organizations. He is so accessible and available. So I want to make sure that you, you are seeing him, anyone watching that is, you know, concerned, alarmed, that they know, please contact John Gardner, associate, you know, that, the registrar's office in Solano County. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I, did anyone else want to speak on public comment?
All right.
Okay, and there are no hands raised online.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we're gonna go to the Joint City Council and Housing Authority meeting, please.
Okay. I'll read the following statement. The holding of a joint meeting of the city council and housing authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. And I need to take roll call. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Panduro.
Here.
Commissioner Tonison.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Bertoni.
Here.
And Chair Moye.
Here.
And Commissioner Vicaro is absent.
Yes.
And then this is a consent.
Yes.
So I'll read the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Do we have any public speakers today on this?
No. Did anyone wish to speak on item three?
All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that was unanimous. We will now reconvene the city council meeting and turn to the city council consent calendar.
Okay, now we're on the regular consent. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Do we have any public speakers on this?
No, I only have one speaker card for item 13. Did anyone wish to speak about the regular consent calendar? Okay.
All right. Any questions or anything need to be pulled, colleagues? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the, the calendar, the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That was unanimous. We now turn to new business.
New business, item 12.
Yes.
Minute action approving mayor's appointment to the youth commission. I need to have you vote before swearing in, but I don't know if Rishi Patel is here? Okay, so we still need to vote, but she's not here to swear in.
Okay. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the youth commission reappointment.
So moved.
So moved, and a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So you'll perform the oath of office at another time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, and now we're gonna move on to item 13, please.
Okay, item 13, Landscape Oversight Committee update. And our presenter is Marisa Kumpeon, Senior Management Analyst for Public Works.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I am here this evening to provide a very concise update here on our Landscape Oversight Committee efforts thus far. A little bit of background, the committee was formed by resolution at the February 23 meeting. I believe that the application process started that year in July. There was a little bit of a, a challenge in getting applicants for a few of the districts, and so I just want to acknowledge that there was a timeframe from the initial establishment to the actual committee moving forward. Members were appointed in October of '23, and shortly thereafter, a number of our Public Works professionals scheduled meeting greets with all the various committee members. We also ensured that they went through their ethics training and Brown Act training. Our first meeting was held in November, and during that meeting, we covered just initial introductions again, and staff provided extensive background, because while we recognized that there are some members who are very well-versed in the content, there are many that, this was maybe their first experience with this, and so we wanted to make sure everyone was, had the same level of information. We had our second meeting in January, and at that meeting, we established a chair and vice chair position, and we also established our quarterly meeting schedule. At that meeting, there was a request by our chair to establish a special meeting for February, because there was so much content that was desired to be covered, just a lot of information. And then unfortunately, our fourth, scheduled fourth and fifth meeting happened canceled based on lack of quorum. I have heard that there was at least one member who was experiencing some medical issues and a variety of unexcused absences, quite frankly, from some other members. I did have a conversation with our chair, and there was a request to really understand what it is and how it is that staff, one, kind of takes tally, roll call, for those meetings that don't have quorum. And I basically explained that we don't, we either have a quorum or we don't. There was a desire to maybe explore what we could do. There was also the request for staff to try to encourage participation, maybe even call committee members and encourage them to participate. But where we're at right now is essentially staff is seeking some council direction on regarding how to address absences. In, I believe it was 2022, there was an ordinance that was established for the Planning Commission because they had a similar issue. And so there was some language that was established, and I present that here this evening for consideration, should that be something that council would like to discuss. And I think this one talks about initial absences exempt, and this one goes on to describe it a little bit further. So with that, I'm available for any questions or comments specific to that, or any other of a variety of questions as it relates to Landscape Oversight Committee. I want to also acknowledge I do have some members here from our Public Works Operations Team, and give them a special acknowledgement, as many of them started their day at 5:00 this morning, and they're here. And so, one other comment I'll make is that, from this Landscape Oversight Committee, it really speaks to landscaping and also a lot of the work that's happened with the LLMDs. So I imagine there may be some questions around that. And with that, staff will pause for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have public speakers on this, I'd like to hear that first, please.
I have Rick Johnson, and then I have one hand raised online.
All ready?
Mayor, will I be able to extend just a little bit longer than the three minutes?
No. I'll give you, I'll give you both, whoever's talking, three and a half minutes. So go.
So go. Recommendations also from the chair. I did not know that the presentation was gonna be made tonight, otherwise I would have coordinated better. I found out last week that it was gonna be a presentation, so I apologize for not doing it correctly. Proposing, I am proposing a couple of changes for our group also, to add the duties of the committee to participate in the 218 process, to assist reaching the residents, provide information to the residents and the city regarding the other districts, that we be on board and be assisting that, that effort. That membership be at large, not restricted to the district. This affords the opportunity to locate and select the most motivated and passionate to help. Two, the most fervent landscape-supporting residents could not participate, because I got a position, they did not, and I would love to have them on, on board. Three, the number of members to increase to 10. We need the additional ideas brought to the table, more contacts, more ability to reach out. Meetings increased to six per year instead of quarterly. Quarterly would be good for an up-and-running group that already has functions happening. Our first four meeting, three meetings, were preparation, education, and trying to get people up to speed who, unlike me, don't live in the weeds. That's where I seem to be well-suited to. Those are the four recommendations that I was gonna pass. the number of members to increase to 10. We need the additional ideas brought to the table, more contacts, more ability to reach out. Meetings increased to six per year instead of quarterly. Quarterly would be good for an up-and-running group that already has functions happening. Our first four meetings, three meetings, were preparation, education, and trying to get people up to speed who, unlike me, don't live in the weeds. That's where I seem to be well-suited to. Those are the four recommendations that I was going to pass along, along with the recommendation for having an absentee policy, which is important to have. We need to ensure that people are participating or that they are not part of the group. It has to be rules. And if I'll get into this as deeply as I can, and then cut me off. The landscape oversight committee serves many purposes. One of the most important is that Fairfield residents know that somebody is looking out for them, representing them and their point of view as tax-paying residents and focused on one area landscaping. This is the most, this was the most common question I received during the 218 campaign throughout Paradise Valley, is how can I trust that my increased taxes are going to be spent correctly? This is not to slight the city council at all, but you are over all the issues throughout the city and not able to operate in the depth of knowledge and understanding that a small focus group is capable. Another in that city is moving so fast, I'm sorry, that another issue is that the city is moving so fast and working on so many projects, it's hard to stay up on them all with depth. We found that during the 218 campaign, there was a failure of communications and trust. The lack of these generated strong negative reactions as seen in the informational meetings conducted by NBS. The problem of a lack of funding was known for years prior to the extreme budget slashing that took place a few days prior to Christmas. No communications from the city to the residents took place to advise them of the impending financial shortfall that would drastically reduce their maintenance and landscaping. We learned from Superintendent Mike Gray that the lack of funding made the enforcement of contracts much more difficult and impossible under certain circumstances. He referred to the contracts as guidelines, and in many cases, they were not able to be truly enforced on some of the provisions. The additional downside of the decision is that the contractors knew that they were not being truly held accountable and therefore might unintentionally, or intentionally, underperform, which saves them money. Over the years, Public Works had had the opportunity to reduce contract scope of work to meet the level of funding available, and this did not take place.
You need to wind it up.
Okay. And I'm going to hand each of you the full document, so you guys can have a read that. But we have an opportunity to truly serve the city and to serve you, and that's our goal, is to do just that.
Thank you.
Okay, next is June Johnson. And now we have two hands raised online as well.
Two online, okay. You got three and a half minutes.
Evening, all of you. I'm sure you're so sick of hearing about these LLMDs, but it's not going to go away, needless to say. Many of the things that Rick mentioned is the reason that we need this landscape committee. I was really disappointed to read in the agenda that there's been so many unexcused absences. That's pretty depressing to me personally, because I actually volunteered to be on that committee, and I was not selected. And talk about somebody who's passionate about it, here I am. And I know there are others, and I believe we can find more, particularly because it's not just my area in Rolling Hills, but all over the city, it's looking really, really bad, and we need to fix this. So I mainly came tonight because I was concerned that, are you going to dissolve this committee now because you're not having people attend these meetings? I certainly hope that's not going to happen, because the reason we are here today is that can was kicked down the road for years and years and years. We need a committee that's going to ensure we are not here again another day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Valeria, can you put the first person online?
The next speaker is called Freyce. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
They have three and a half.
What's the name?
Could you please repeat your name? Thank you.
Steve Garretson.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So as I sit here and listen, I have to support Rick Johnson's proposal. And June, there were many people, I'm one of those people who would gladly volunteer to be on this oversight committee, but Rick took that position. The oversight committee is a necessity for the city to make sure that the money is being spent properly. Look, the city has failed so many times on the LMD process. You know that, I know that. Kat, Pam, David Cassway knows that. Everyone knows that there's a real problem here. Without an oversight committee, you guys are going to fall back in and fail all over again. It hasn't been in place long enough to actually benefit, derive something out of it, and do something. Don't be silly enough to deprive the people of Fairfield the ability to control and manage the money that we pay in to make sure that this stuff gets done. And if you take away an oversight, you're just going to get people up in arms all over again. I guarantee if you do something, I know in Paradise Valley, we'll be very angry about it. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Valeria, the next person. And it looks like we have an additional one, too.
The next person is called James Simeon.
Thank you. Go ahead, James. Can you repeat your name, please?
James Simeon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Great. I'm a homeowner in Paradise Valley, and I agree with Steve and Rick. We need to keep this committee around and find the people who really want to be on the committee to serve, to ensure that the funds are being handled properly. The last time we were there, prior to the voting, Pam and the mayor, you guys said, we didn't know this is going to change. No, you didn't have a handle on what the lower-level committee or employees were doing. And it was slipping through the cracks, money wasn't being collected, it was, the budget was out of whack. And here you have a chance to make a difference. And we're coming forward saying, look, in Paradise Valley, we're already experiencing these issues with the budget, particularly with the tree trimming. You know, we were, everyone voted for maintenance. We do see a difference with the landscaping, but now that we're voicing concerns about tree trimming, we're starting to realize there's more issues that are popping up that the county city manager, the legal whoever, are sidestepping, saying, oh, no, it's not, it's not an annual maintenance thing, it's a three-year thing, we'll address it in three years. So this is not what me as a homeowner voted for. We, the homeowner voted in good conscience that we're going to pay more, we're going to get the services, and we're not getting that 100%. We're getting sidestepped. And this is a legal liability issue for the city, for the county, if these branches and stuff are falling on people's homes, because you guys want to sidestep 100 grand to maintain the trees properly. So I think these committees need to stick around. Like Steve said, they haven't been around long enough, and they're just getting traction. You know, if you're going to sever the arms so you can sidetrack the budget and then redirect the funds, I mean, that's what it appears. You know, we're not getting straight answers from the email threads that are going back and forth. So I hope you guys understand where we stand in the mistrust of the city council or the people in charge of directing, funding, or approving tree trimming services in contracts with landscapers. So I hope you take this into serious consideration and address the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have the other person hung up.
All right. Is nobody else online?
There's five people online, but no one has their hand raised. Did anyone else wish to speak?
All right, then. I'm going to bring it back to council for discussion. Anybody want to go? Anybody have questions of staff or suggestions, or what our bosses have asked us to do? Go ahead, Councilman Tonason?
Yes. I'm confused on why this committee isn't getting a quorum. I think that there's some improvement that needs to be made on it, as far as I'm concerned. I've been to, I've been to one meeting. I guess I want to try and pin down what the purpose of the committee is, because I don't, I don't really, I don't really know what that is. To me, this is a 218 committee. It's a 218 campaign committee. Is there, once we, once we pass the 218s, if we pass the 218s, does that then require a committee to conduct oversight on, you know, on future maintenance, landscape maintenance issues? But I'm confused. I don't know what this committee's purpose is. So I mean, if we can hash it out a little bit on the dais, I'd like to get others' opinions.
I think that, I'm going to go ahead and have the vice mayor speak. I think that's part of what our citizens said tonight, is that they also want a definition. So, you know, we need to sharpen that up, and that's, I think, what you're speaking to as well. I don't see it as just a 218 committee, but I'm going to go ahead and let everybody else go. Madam Vice Mayor, did you want to speak? Help us out here?
Yeah, to the first issue of regarding attendance and questions over why we can't get a quorum, I think that Rick Johnson's recommendation speaks to that question very accurately. We need to constitute this committee with a group of people who are dedicated to doing the work, period. So the first way we tried that is to get different, you know, two people from each district in the city. Obviously, that's not working. But to throw out the baby with the bathwater is not the solution here. I think that we need to open up the committee participation to people who actually want to do this, who actually have some skill and talent and are willing to give freely, with a capital freely, of their time to get this work done. And I think that if we have the right committee constituted, the issue of quorums will greatly subside. Not to say that we still shouldn't have a policy for attendance policy, I mean, I agree with that, but I think that the quorum issue will subside substantially. And then when, with respect to the second issue that you brought up, is the purpose of this committee. The purpose of this committee is, in my vision, twofold. Number one, to make sure that the reason that we're here right now does not happen again. The reason we're here now is because, and it's not, this is not about finger pointing, this is about looking forward and saying, what can we do different? The reason that we're here is because, for whatever reason, this was overlooked. Escalator was not in the LMDs, and all of a sudden, prices are going up, and this LMD hasn't been updated since 1984, 40 years ago. So we want to put in, we want to put in a mechanism to help us avoid that ever happening again. So that's number one. That's kind of the oversight committee, but then we need help with our 218 process, obviously. We had nine go up to vote for last year, two passed, one of which was Paradise Valley, and that did not pass by a landslide. That passed by the skin of its teeth. So we need a robust grassroots effort to get out in the community, neighbors talking to neighbors, because that's what worked in Paradise Valley, quite frankly, that and clear communication. So that's kind of, in my view, that's the second, that's the second purpose of this committee, is to help us with our future 218 processes, to help us galvanize our communities, to help us message clearly, and to make, because, you know, NBS obviously did not do that. So this is an effort of the people who pay the bills, the people who pay into these LMDs, to be a part of the process. People support what they help to create. And there are some people who are willing to serve, who are pretty well-versed, more so than I am, when it comes to LMD. So that's kind of where I see the LMD Oversight Committee working, on LMD Oversight of the LMDs that are in place, and then with the 218 process, to help us get our LMDs passed in the future.
I think the city attorney has something to say about that.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
So through the mayor, and I apologize if I misunderstood the comment, but I want to clarify, LMDs are not legally required. They are a district that may be formed upon a resolution of intention by the city council, following an engineer's report indicating the need for it. It then goes to a public hearing, and there is notice sent out to each district that wants to be formed, and each member of the district through the 218 process has the right to send in, either whether they want to form the LMD or not. That is a form of electioneering, which the city council may not get involved in. It's up to each individual homeowner through the 218 process to determine whether or not they want to pay these extra fees pursuant to 218. But, but a committee formed by the city council could not take on political advocacy, which this would be if you said, we're going to go out and do 218. Because another way you could read the vote is that those districts don't want to pay extra taxes, and that's their right. And so I want to remind the council, the council cannot, and the districts, through a commission, through a committee sanctioned by the city council, cannot be involved in any sort of political electioneering for or against a 218 district. That's completely up to the voters. And if this committee indicates that they want to be an advocate, I would remind the council and urge the council that that doesn't expose the city to liability of having one of its commissions or bodies taking a political stance on a position, so.
And thank you for that clarification. And through the process last year, I think that that's probably one of the points that rang loudest and clearest throughout this whole process, is that advocacy by the city is not to be allowed. We went through and talking about, you know, the flyers that went out, et cetera, that they had to be neutral and everything. So I appreciate that clarification. I think that that's one thing about LMDs that the community actually understands. There's a whole lot of other stuff that they might not understand, but that we get. So that is, that is how I view this committee, and that can be part of maybe, you know, a training or a document just saying, here's a clarifying document, no advocacy. This is about information. Because what happened last time during the LMD process is that the information came out kind of as gobbledygook. And people just didn't understand and didn't kind of have the patience to read an engineer's report. Really? So, so we can streamline our messaging, that's one of the things this committee will be doing. And with that point of clarification that the city attorney just made. So that's, that's what I have, so far.
Council, oh, go ahead, Councilman.
It's a landscape oversight committee. I hear LMD 218, LMD 218. What is the mechanism to increase the fees charged without passing the 218?
There isn't. There isn't. But, hold on just a second. I think, as we have a golf advisory board that help us with everything from budget to who are we going to hire? That's what I see here. Who are we hiring? Are people doing the right thing? Why is this money not being used that way? It's, it's the same thing with any other commission, the planning commission, that's a little different, as you know. But the youth commission, they can look at any of this stuff, look at our budgets if they want to, and tell us this is where we're going. So there isn't, there isn't a mechanism, Councilman, to do that. But this is a mechanism for the citizens who are paying into these LMDs to watch where their money's going.
Maybe this is for Maria. How much money does the landscape oversight committee have to distribute? How much money does the Landscape Oversight Committee have to distribute?
So, it varies depending on the specific LMD, but the overall landscape budget in itself, I would defer that to Chris Lewis, who's alongside me.
Good evening, everybody. Chris Lewis, Management Analyst with Department of Public Works. So, the Landscape Oversight Committee itself has a budget of zero dollars. What they can do is oversee the budgets for the individual LLMDs and oversee the budgets for the general fund landscape areas, but the committee itself doesn't have any budget available to, say, print flyers.
And those LLMD budgets don't increase without a passage of a 218?
Correct.
If I may, I wanna, I just checked with the City Attorney about just providing a little bit of insight that may be helpful to this dialogue. It's really appreciated, because I think one of the benefits of me coming on here as the liaison is that I am very unfamiliar with the process. Clearly, you've seen Chris Lewis in a variety of times here, much more so than myself, so I'm very, I'm neutral. I am learning alongside the committee in terms of, like, what this all constitutes in oversight. My experience has been that there's a lot of passion, a lot of interest, but not a lot of dedicated work towards some of what it is, we understand the committee to be tasked towards. Staff has spent hours, in some cases, responding to PRAs, responding to what seems to be actual directing staff on specific questions, and I think that what would be helpful is, when we revisit these guidelines, for us to have some clarity so that we can further utilize that as a tool, to help us have more facilitated discussion. One of the things that we have encouraged very early on is for the committee to provide counsel with some type of update, whether that's written or in person, even if that update was just saying, we have met, we are learning about background, we intend to do X, Y, and Z. Staff is extremely cautious about directing the committee in itself, because we recognize that we're there to facilitate and create the forum for the discussion. And so, I think there is a lot of energy, but there's confusion. And so, for those reasons, we're not seeing a lot of momentum, and maybe that has contributed to people dropping off, the lack of interest. So, I just wanted to please offer that for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. That is helpful. Yeah, we, we don't want these committee members directing staff. We don't direct staff. That's what our city management does, and so, that's inappropriate. To ask questions is, is appropriate, obviously, to ask for public records, and I think that once you get the trust, they don't need to file PRAs, they can just say, hey, could you bring this information? I mean, that's what I see. Yes, Rick?
I have so much to add to this. I can answer his questions, I can support what she's saying, but I'm being held out of the conversation. Is there a reason?
'Cause, 'cause you already spoke. And I tried to give everybody the same time, which is what I have to do. Is that right, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct, but you do have discretion, I should say, you know, I don't want, wanna say that you're absolutely, you know, locked into three and a half minutes. If the Council needs more information, it's at your discretion.
All right. Let me, yeah, Rick, we'll get back to you in just a second. I appreciate, appreciate it. I'm gonna get to the other Council members and Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, trying to think where to start. So, I interviewed quite a few people from District One. I feel like there were six, seven, eight. There was a lot of amazing candidates, and so, I really had to study this Landscape Oversight Committee guidelines and duties, and, and put together a matrix to really talk to each one of them and really understand strengths and weaknesses surrounding what I saw, you know, that was clearly written as the Landscape Oversight Committee guidelines and duties, and then talk to all of these passionate, amazing people in my district, and try to figure out, you know, how to score them, who. So, and they came, they scored pretty evenly, and the person that had the highest number, I, I, the reason why he did is because he had, and what I thought was kinda not clearly written but assumed, is, hey, we have these landscape contracts, we're not getting any more money to these contracts, but we need to figure out what is gonna happen within these contracts with this small amount of money. So, this is the cap, what all can get done with that amount of money. And so, the person that won had that kind of a background, and I thought that's what some of these, you know, powers and duties were. So, so that, that's what edged my, the representative for D1 out. But, what I did appreciate, and everyone checked off these boxes, was the education of district residents as to the operation and function of LLMDs. And I didn't see that, you know, the education component, I thought that was so key, because coming on board to, to City Council, that's one of the first things I had to learn, and I was a little overwhelmed in, in the learning, and what I quickly learned, as much as I knew, there were people on Next Door and that were coming to the City Council, and they had this thing. They really understand LLMDs in this really passionate way, and they had figured out how to consolidate this information in ways that were bite-sized for the rest of the community to, to, to take in. So, I see a lot of those type of champions, education champions of LLMDs that are all throughout the city, and they are amazing and powerful. But to me, that's only one splice of, 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 of the, of the pie here, with the most immediate being, how do we best serve the community with the dollars we had? And what kinda triggered me, I think I'm the one who made the motion, to let's talk about this committee, is two things. When I see quorum issues, to me, there's a bigger problem. Why aren't people that are passionate showing up? Is the agenda not clear enough? Are we not moving through the agenda well? You know, it doesn't, you, you can have passionate folks running things, but that doesn't mean they're the best person to run things. Just, you put me inside, and we all sit on a lot of committees. So, all because I'm on a committee does not mean I should be Chair. I promise you. You don't want me to be Chair, nitpicking through all types of stuff. Sometimes, it's that person that just gets, this is the agenda, let's get this through. So, I think there's another problem within this, why aren't people showing up? Let's, you know, let's figure that out. Let's make sure that they're small, you know, just very concise agendas. It's hard, because now we're like, this is a brand-new committee, figure it out, figure it out by yourself, you know, we're, you know, we're staff, you can't give us order, but boom, we're here to support you. Like, it's confusing, it's not clear. And you know what, Marissa, I really appreciate you saying, I see confusion. Look, I don't, I don't have anything, you know, there, there's, there's no, what is it? In the fight, there's, there's no dog in this fight. Okay. You're saying, look, I'm just telling you, like, I, I see it, it's not, you know, there's confusion there. Let's figure that part out, and let's make these duties and powers even clearer. I tell you, just putting them, you know, I have a whole lot of great, but I've got highlights and I, and, like, it's just not clear. Can I have some clear bullets of what we need, what we're doing here? If I've gotta do all this to dissect it, what do, what does everybody else do? Okay, I'm gonna stop fussing.
No, 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 you're at all, I can listen some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of passion, and I appreciate what you're saying. Councilman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm just gonna add, as one of the only district that does not have an LLMD, and I did struggle to find someone to sit on this committee, but I wanna make it clear that this is, again, a Landscape Oversight Committee. Well, we are overseeing the, you know, I think, I think, I think it's what my colleagues have been talking about too, is about the refocus, right? How do we refocus the committee? Because you do have passionate people that want to participate. I struggled to find someone, but that does not mean that my, the people that live in my district or in my area of town should have lesser of a chance to participate. Because in the future, I mean, in the past, it's a, it's a part of town that has not been asked to come forward and stepped up to participate, and so now they are being, they are being, being, giving these opportunities to participate on commissions and committees. And yeah, there are issues. We have the linear trail that sits in our backyard, like, along through my, through my district, and so that is a large part of landscaping, correct? And so, I, I'm kind of not, I know we had, one of the solutions that was talked about was making it an at-large, and for me, I would love the opportunity to stay where we are able to still appoint folks that live within our areas, if we increase, I don't know, the at-large positions, but, you know, I, again, I think there is a bigger core issue as to why people are not attending and why there is not a quorum, and I think that's probably the, the issue maybe more at hand today, because this, you know, these kind of commissions can be helpful and they can be efficient, but I think it's getting to that place where they, where we are able to utilize them in the best possible way, both for city and staff, and for the residents, and for the city as a whole. And so, I just wanna make sure that, you know, just because I don't have an LLMD does not mean that, again, I don't know what it is, and that my folks, that folks that live in my area should be excluded from that process, so.
I agree.
Those are my comments.
I agree with that. Councilman Doug, do you have anything?
Just a, basically, just a observation. I, in my professional life, I've set up many a committee, peer, peer groups, alumni groups, and they all start out very passionate, and there are some people that are more passionate than others. It's an unpaid position, they get changed jobs, and I understand how, how passion can be lost in time, so I did like the idea of possibly raising the number to a little higher number, so there might be people that can fill in when there isn't absences. However, if, if people aren't showing up, I believe that, that says a lot right there, whether it's confusion, they've lost their passion, not interested, too confusing, I think all these things play a part in it. So, I think some solutions would be real easy, simplify it, up the numbers, and go from there.
Okay. Rick, is there, come on up. Now, don't make it too long, 'cause like, Mama gets a little angry. Okay, all right, bro.
And I've got some more comments, too.
And you do, too. Okay, go ahead.
We have one member, our co-chair, who has been physically out for the last six months with a physical condition that prohibits her from participating at all. We have another-
I'm sorry, there's seven members, right? Is there seven members on the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Next one is your, your member. Your member has withdrawn from the committee. They said they were asked to go. She didn't express any passion. I wish we had seen some of the passion from that person. We didn't see that. In your visit, when you were there with us for five minutes, you saw part of our meeting, but you did not see what we were trying to accomplish. We're trying to educate the people who are there, who have not been exposed to those things before, so the education was there, and her concern was, there's no money, how can we do anything? And she didn't wanna participate. So, those are the two reasons for that. What are we-
Oh, go ahead.
What are we doing as far as the committee? What is our job? It's to oversee and to give an opportunity for trust to build in the city of the residents so that they wanna support their city. There've had so many problems occur negatively with the landscaping districts over time that people lost heart. The things that have not been taken care of were not the fault of the landscape workers out there. They could not get paid what was necessary to fulfill the contract. So, the residents are looking at their landscape, looking at, thinking it's terrible, and are blaming the workers out there. It's not them. We can't get them, we cannot provide them funding to do the work, and that is never clarified to the residents. So, they think Dominguez was the whole problem, and it's not.
Right.
And so, the problem is, is fairly large, so the education of our people, to get them up to speed, their desire is there, but they're learning new things that they don't fully understand. So, that's all we were doing, is organizing and trying to figure out, at the beginning of this committee that ever existed prior, we're trying to get it down. We have our, our goals and objectives were introduced in our second meeting, and were being finalized in the third.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for those clarifications, Councilman Tonason.
So, I think, I'm frustrated, the PRA is really frustrating me.
Really?
Yes. I don't, I don't understand, it's, it's a volume of work, and I don't wanna drag this out much longer. I love Rick like a brother. He owns Tonason Appraisal Service. There's no, there's nothing personal here.
Brothers fight, go ahead.
Yes, we do.
But, but the PRA frustrates me. Are you directing staff? You know, I, I don't know what the answer is. And this is more towards that side. Five, five staff, when I, when I was at that meeting, there was five staff members.
Yes.
Why?
That's my question, too. We got, we got the staff members come, we had the superintendent-
I guess where I'm going with that is I would like to see that number reduced.
Absolutely.
Okay, Rick, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Hold up there, I was about to cut your mic, sir. Okay, and Councilman Tonason, you had a question over here.
And I, I think you guys got that. Why, why is there five staff members?
Would you like for me to address that now? Yes. So, we wanted to make sure that this committee felt fully supported, because it was such a prominent issue over the course of an entire year, and so, the initial meeting, the staff members that were represented there were our Public Works Director, our Operations Superintendent, who oversees the Landscape Division Manager, and then our two senior management analysts, myself as a facilitator, and Chris Lewis as really the historian and the person doing a lot of the work, and I believe one other staff member taking minutes. And so, if that's a desire of the Council and direction by city administration, we can look to consolidate that, but we wanted to make sure that this committee, because, again, it is brand-new, the guidelines that are in tonight's packet are essentially all the direction and support that we were given in order to really kinda get this going and formulated. I have looked at a sample from the city and county of Sacramento in terms of a commission handbook, because there was nothing formed. I started creating a draft for this committee to have some type of tool, reference, and then I found our Youth Commission Handbook, which is actually much more concise and really simple, and so, I'm probably going in that direction. But, you know, as, as we hear often from our Vice Mayor, people help support, people support what they help to create, and so, there you go.
That's my favorite saying of hers. So, I'm, I'm gonna try to, oh, go ahead, Chris, did you have something?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that all the staff that were present actually played a role, they weren't just, you know, you know, there observing. Our Public Works Director, of course, joined the first one or two meetings, I believe it was, but our superintendent, our, our Landscape Division Manager, our other management analysts, everybody's playing a role. A lot of the information that's being, it's a volume of information that's being requested, and a lot of these folks have a lot of the institutional knowledge. I'm just one side of the equation on the LLMDs, but we have our superintendent, our Landscape Manager, who's actually in the field directing the contractors, responding to residents' requests, you know, seeing firsthand some of the issues in, in the field. So, I think that while we might be able to reduce, well, our, our Director doesn't attend regularly now, but I, I don't know that it would be feasible to go, reduce staff any further, just because of the information and the conversations that are being had require the people to be in the room to be able to respond to the Landscape Committee at, you know, at the meetings.
Thank you for that. So, here's, here's what I wanna do, because I think there are a lot of questions here. It looks like a majority of us want to go ahead and fix the committee, so we're doing what we should be doing. I'd like to appoint two of you to do a subcommittee, the Vice Mayor and anybody else wanna do this, to deal with staff and also liaison with our residents, and to nail it down nitty gritty, this is what we're gonna do, this is how we're gonna do it, and also give us a number. I think it's still a good idea to have one person from every district, and then three at-large, so you have nine people at any time, and we can, I think that works, and that's what I would like to do, is, Councilman?
We're, we're gonna create another committee for, to, to do what with the committee?
They're going to come back to the City Council with suggestion on exactly how we're gonna make this a smooth run.
You, you lost me there. Make what a smooth run? Are, are we gonna-
So, we aren't here all night tonight. So we aren't here all night tonight talking about this. These are things that should be handled at our level in the staff on what we should be doing to lay out. You asked early on, what is it that we're doing? What is this committee supposed to do? That's what I'm asking for this subcommittee to do. Tell us what it is we're going to get done. I liked what Councilwoman Williams talked about. This is how much money we have. What can we get done with it? All those things. And have people from each district, because we don't want to exclude anybody from any area in the city. And so I, Councilwoman Williams, would you be willing to, to sit with the Vice Mayor and do this?
Yes, I think my time would be, I almost would want to also see one of the meetings in process.
Uh huh.
Just to, just kind of see.
Okay.
So, but I absolutely would dedicate some time to drafting and talking to the Vice Mayor, drafting what, what I see as just more clarity. Is that what you're asking for?
That's what I'm asking for. And I liked what you had to say earlier. So that's what I'm looking for. You guys take whatever, you know, what time you need. What do you think, Mr. City Manager, for them to, to get this done or bring it back knowing that they're busy? So we can, we can get this done, right?
One more question, I promise I'm done.
Sure, yeah, yeah. No, that's okay.
Chris or Marissa, either one, how long do you think it's gonna take you to fulfill the PRA that was sent your way? Is it hours? Is it days?
So, may I speak to that?
Yes, please.
So normally, the city attorney doesn't handle the majority of PRAs, but in large requests where there's possibility of disclosing confidential information, the city attorney will review.
Hours.
I've had, I've assigned an associate to go through the materials. But, I mean, Mr., I want to be very clear. Mr. Johnson has an absolute right to make the request. He's made the request pursuant to the Public Records Act, and we will fulfill it. And I don't want to say that he's, that this is unusual. We do get special, we get special, excuse me, we get Public Records Act requests that are voluminous in nature. It is our job as your attorney to make sure that we don't disclose any confidential or, you know, information that we should not give out. So I'm not expressing an opinion one way or another, whether it's right or wrong. He is entitled to make the PRA request. It is large, and I normally, I do not look at them myself a lot because you don't need your appointed city attorney using billable hours for that.
Thank you, thank you for that. Can I do the work for you? Okay. And I was asking the city manager how much time he would think, you know?
I mean, ultimately, that's gonna really be driven more by any subcommittee member's schedules.
Right.
Just being realistic in how these things, you know, take some time. You know, it'd probably be a couple of months.
Yeah.
To have a couple of meetings, try to figure out exactly what that scope's gonna look like. I assume that that's probably gonna involve some, you know, draft red line revisions to the resolution that identifies, you know, the Resolution 2023 dash, excuse me, 26 that outlines right now under Exhibit A what it is the powers and duties of the committee are. So what I'm, I think I'm hearing City Council say is that you'd like to revamp those powers and duties, make them much more crystal clear. I think bullet points was.
Yes.
I'm always a big fan of bullet points because it's nice and clear and simple of identifying exactly what the committee is to accomplish, and then come back to City Council with that resolution, a revised resolution that, you know, further clarifies exactly what the committee's gonna accomplish, if there's gonna be changes in the size of the committee, so on and so forth.
That, that's what we got, thumbs up there. So, yeah, Councilman Doug?
Just another observing comment is that the whole, whole operation starts to exceed, I mean, I, we gotta look at the whole city, our budget, money. And, and a lot of this is to help us, you know, with budgeting and all. But if it starts getting blown, are we gonna put a cap on, you know, how many staff? I'd like to see that all in the, I'd like that to be part of this as well because, you know, we have an Oversight Committee that's supposed to help, and if it ends up costing more money than, than, than it's even what we're trying to do, I'd like to, you know, put the kibosh to it completely. I'm just telling you that right now.
Well, yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking about the entire city. We have a budget. We have a money shortfall right now. Five, you know, I just want that part of this discussion, is that we're trying to make sure that our money is spent properly and we're not wasting it hourly on staff for an Oversight Committee. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. I mean, I hear you. Okay, so, Madam Vice Mayor?
So I just want to point a clarification that the staff was not requested by the committee, correct? I mean, you're the liaison, so you're the, but this, but the committee didn't request the staff, right?
Yeah, but staff's gonna have the information that the committee's asking for. So if you look at the resolution and the types of things that the committee is there to serve, the, without staff, they're gonna have nothing that they're, that they're gonna be overseeing. And so at some point in time, at some level, there's gonna have to be staff involvement with the committee in order to give the committee the information they need in order to oversee what it is that staff and the contractors are doing.
Especially when the committee is getting up and running. And, but the provision of information is one thing, but the, you know, like the staff time and all the people going to the meeting, I mean, can't that be supplemented by some kind of report or something like that? I'm just saying, it's my understanding that the committee did not, you know, request that 12 people from staff come.
The, as, as Marissa stated, there's individual specializations of information and each of the different staff that were there have. We wanted to support the committees that started up to make sure they have the resources. And knew that they, knew that they were getting what they needed and helping to facilitate that conversation. And different folks have different skill sets and backgrounds in terms of what that information is. I would agree with you. Over time, hopefully, there would be less staff involvement with the committee. But I will make perfectly clear that every single committee that the city of Fairfield has does require more staff time than you might believe in order to put the agendas together, provide information, you know, make sure that we're following Brown Act and transparency and all of that stuff. It is a considerable workload. And so.
Understood.
You know, we, we want to make sure and strike that balance.
Right. And I'm sure that we can, and I'm sure that we will. And I just want to say, you know, we're not spending our money, we're spending their money. We're spending their money. And while it's important to balance the expenditures and everything, let's not forget whose money is going into these accounts. Their money is. And so I, I wanna, I wanna just speak up for that point, that, you know, why is it taking so much? Why is it spending so much? Because it's their money. That's why. That's why. So, and I'm sure we all understand, I just want to, you know, there's two sides to every, to every story. And the point here is that, let's face it, the city's oversight is why we're here in the first place, period. So we're doing our good faith effort to try to use the folks who want to volunteer to help us do a better job. But I don't want this committee or any other committee to feel like, you know, they're, they're unduly burdensome if they're not up and running like, you know, a streamlined committee in the first few months. So let's give this a look. Let's give this another, you know, go over, come back with some clarity. And one more question for you. What was the, what is the confusion all about?
Competing desires in terms of areas of focus. And so as an example, one of the requests, which I felt as a facilitator I had to talk down, was there was a request by the Chair to look at every single individual inspection report to the level of staff providing that. Looking at, looking at the actual individual inspection reports, then wanting to make a comparison between an updated template, et cetera. There's been numerous hours spent within the forum and also outside of the forum, special meetings that staff has held, where there's requests to talk about the background, talk about everything that's ever happened that's ever been wrong. And I say this, again, as somebody with no skin in the game, somebody, a staff member completely neutral to this process. And so staff was asked to prepare the history. It's an attachment. All of the agendas and all of the detailed background and staff reports are currently published on the city of Fairfield website under the Committee Landscape Oversight details. That takes a lot of time. And so staff in those meetings is often having an hour-long conversation on one topic. And so, again, we're there with one or two people who are very passionate and vocal, and then other people who are like completely new to this process and don't really have that level of background. And so they feel overwhelmed, presumably, they feel overwhelmed. And if I could just make one more point.
Sure, absolutely.
And maybe if I could even call our Operations Superintendent just to give the little bit of background. I think a lot of you said it very well. People lost interest when they realized that their hands were tied and there's no budget to really do anything with, right? So I think that there's this perception that the committee is able to provide some type of oversight to how to spend this money, but in some ways, a lot of the contracts have, were handcuffed because of either the lack of availability, the lack of interest, or even just, if I could have my, come over here and just provide a little bit of background, additional context to that, maybe one or two minutes.
Thanks, Nick. Just talk about the background, about some of the limitations on the contracts, how the, the one person that had been serving us went away. No? Okay, sorry.
We're good. Okay, so.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I know this has been difficult, again, for the folks that are here. You're jumping in the middle of it. So are our residents. And so, you know, we have to all, we need to understand that. So it's gonna be you two on the subcommittee. You guys know what to do. If you don't, make it up while you're going. Thank you very much. All right.
And when are we coming back with this? In a couple of months, you said, David, you think is reasonable?
I mean, I, I'm thinking that's probably how much time it just naturally will take. But, you know, of course, I'll work with both of you to, to schedule these conversations out, and we'll, we'll move with haste.
Well, I think that Councilmember Williams has a good idea, and that's that we go to a meeting. And so I think we can start there. We can hopefully attend the next meeting and kind of start, you know, start our subcommittee overview. I think that would be a good, good way to start.
And I'm gonna say how much I appreciate you two.
Absolutely.
Because I was like, I don't think I want to do that, but I guess I could, but, so I appreciate it. I do. Thank you.
I can't wait to read all, more about LLMDs, right? Keep it tree, same for you? Yeah. I'm ready to get into it. When is the next meeting?
Next meeting, Chairman?
I believe it's currently scheduled for October 9th. However, a couple of prominent staff have had some scheduling conflicts. I was actually going to poll the members to potentially reschedule that. However, I'll circle with staff and see if we can still accommodate that time, and if not, I'll be reaching out to committee members.
I will be out of town for a hearing on October 9th.
Okay. Well, even more appropriate, so we'll look at rescheduling the next meeting. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks a million. Thank you, everybody here. Okay, so now we're gonna go ahead and move on to item 14.
Yes, item 14, Resolution 2024-232 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Rejecting All Bids for the Heart of Fairfield Downtown Texas Streetscape Improvement Project, Phase 1B Improvements, and Resolution 2024-233 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Authorizing an Update to the Fiscal Year 2024 to 2025 Budget for the Heart of Fairfield Downtown Texas Streetscape Improvement Project, Phase 1B Improvements. And our presenter is Ryan Panganeeman, Assistant Public Works Director, Engineering.
Hi, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor Moy, esteemed members of City Council. I'm Ryan Panganeeman. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. My presentation's about 10 minutes. I'll try to run through it as quickly as possible. We're just very excited and grateful for the opportunity to provide an update on this transformative project within our community and downtown Fairfield. So in 2024, it's been a very, very busy year for us. We've made significant progress advancing projects within this Heart of Fairfield specific plan area. These accomplishments reflect our dedication to creating a vibrant, safe, and thriving downtown area. So starting on the left of this slide, in August, we've completed major roadway rehabilitation work on Cad Nassau Drive and Autumn Mall Parkway. These are major arterial roads leading to retail shopping centers and the Fairfield Transportation Center. Late July, construction started on a new, all-inclusive, accessible playground at Allen Witt and scheduled to start early October. As part of the Complete Streets Project, we will replace an old water main along West Texas Street from Curtis Drive to Pennsylvania Avenue. The work is anticipated to continue through spring of 2025. During construction, there will be traffic delays, restricted driveway access, noise, and dust. Understanding these impacts to the community, we have been actively working with MOD to send flyers and notifications in both English and Spanish to businesses, residents, and stakeholders. So tonight's presentation, we're gonna focus on the segment of Texas Street between Pennsylvania and Jefferson Avenues, which is highlighted here in that red circle. To refresh our memory, last September, staff presented this comprehensive plan to enhance pedestrian safety and beautified the downtown Texas Street. So preliminary cost estimates indicate all phases or zones within this area to be about $9.5 million. And based on the available funding, Council authorized a design contract with Gates &amp; Associates for a Phase 1 project, which is within this amenity zone, which is highlighted in green on this slide. A primary goal of the Phase 1 is to create space for outdoor dining and improve efficiencies on our wide sidewalks along Texas Street. So to accomplish this, the project consists of removing antiquated pergolas, scattered pots, benches, and inconsistent street trees. So in its place, we'll be installing art sculptures, integral concrete, colored concrete, purposeful urban tree planting. The purpose of replacing the trees is to create additional storefront visibility. And through staff's hard work, we've identified a new tree species. That's a Chinese pistache. That's based on a feedback from a certified arborist. So understanding the importance of our special events and vibrant atmosphere in the downtown, we have carefully planned the Phase 1 improvement construction schedule to minimize disruptions to both events and that things can proceed smoothly. So earlier this year in April, the demolition of the existing street furniture was completed before the signature Blues Brews and Barbecue Cook-Off. To mitigate safety concerns, decomposed granite was placed in all of the disturbed areas. So building on the work completed in April, we solicited bids for the amenity improvements. So only two bids were received on June 20th. The lowest bid was submitted by Pro Builders. They're from Orangevale. Their bid amount seemed fair and reasonable. However, after evaluating their proposal, it was determined that it was non-responsive and incomplete. So the next bid was submitted by Sabu Inc. from Brentwood in the amount of $3,402,840. So this amount significantly exceeds the available project budget by about 54%. So when we contacted several contractors, local contractors, they mentioned two key factors attributed to the low interest, the low number of bidders that submitted, and the higher-than-anticipated price. So first, contractors mentioned that there are potential logistical challenges and construction inefficiencies related to the accelerated construction schedule. And finally, the project was advertised in the middle of summer, and many contractors opted to not bid, prioritizing existing commitments versus taking new construction projects. So where do we go from here? Within the council agenda packet, we've identified two feasible options for your consideration. The first option is to simply re-advertise the project as is, in its current form, without making any modifications to these existing plans and specifications. So this will allow us to expedite the process. The, the design is complete, and we can move forward quickly and minimize delays. To facilitate this option, we would recommend or request a budget transfer of an additional $785,070 in funding. So from a timing perspective, we anticipate rebidding the project early October with projecting out a 30- to 45-day bid period. This places the contract award at City Council meeting in December, with a tentative construction start in February of 2025. And we would aim to complete the project in advance of the July 4th Independence Day Parade in 2025. So the second option entails combining phases as one larger project. And a benefit of combining the two phases would be a potential cost savings realized through an economy of scales. Additionally, a larger project implemented at one time would minimize impacts to downtown businesses. So council has already programmed design funding for Phase 2 improvements. However, there is no funding identified for the construction. In May this year, we applied for $4.3 million in a federal grant through Congressman Garamendi's office and we're waiting to hear back the results of that application. So just to recall what Phase 2 improvements include, it's ADA compliant curb ramps, high-visibility crosswalk enhancements, redesigning the curbs, returns to reduce vehicle impacts, and new landscaping to increase pedestrian visibility. Because there is no construction funding, that's identified, the estimate's roughly $4.3 million, staff would complete the design and permitting, and then we would seek to identify and apply for grants. At this time, because there is no construction funding, we don't have a schedule or implementation scheduled for Phase 2. So in summary, as a side-by-side comparison of the two options, Option 1 offers a shovel-ready project and allows us to continue making progress on Texas Street. And Option 2 would be combining Option 1 with Phase 2, and there would be potential cost savings achieved by completing a larger project. And then, and as I mentioned previously, completing it over one construction season versus multiple years. The downside there, again, is implementation delays until the project can, can secure grant funding. It's worth noting that within the selection, if we do decide Option 1, the design for the Corner Plaza project, as I mentioned on the previous slide deck, is already programmed through council. The design could be completed in parallel to the Phase 1B construction. And in fact, we've already started our initial conversations with Gates &amp; Associates to provide us the scope of work and fee to complete the plans and specifications for that Corner Plaza project. So for these reasons, staff is recommending proceeding with Option 1. So in closing and pending a discussion here, we have prepared two resolutions. The first is a procedural resolution that rejects the two bids received. And if council decides to proceed with Option 1, staff is requesting an amendment to the fiscal year 2425 budget and authorize a transfer of additional funds for the Phase 1B amenity improvement construction. That concludes my presentation and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I really ran through that quickly, so hopefully caught that. Thank you.
Excellent. We have any public speakers on the, the either resolution?
No, I do not.
Nobody online either?
No.
Alrighty. So, this is back to the council. Any discussion or?
Oh, I'll have discussion unless somebody wants to go first.
No, I, I have a feeling you're going to knock out so many.
Okay, Councilman Tonason.
Cat's going to, Cat's going to put a timer on me.
You've got exactly three and a half minutes. Go!
Uh, could you go to page 11, Ryan? Previous page. So, just explain to me, we had a bid come in, 3.2 million, in that range.
Correct.
We were at 2.2 million?
The engineer's estimate for the project is, was.
How did we miss it by that much?
So, not to call out the contractor specifically, but they have bid on other work within the city and it's been extremely high, so.
That particular contractor?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I would equate that to being the timing of the work, being in the middle of summer and they're, if they could win the job and they could win the contract, they'll do it for that price.
So then when we repurpose, we're, we're going out for a bid for another 2.3 million when we just got a bid for 3.2 million?
Correct. So the, the critical thing as, as we've talked to the contractor community is that the time of year. So we're in October into January and a lot of the contractors are, are scheduling and planning their projects and portfolios for the upcoming season. So they're, they're getting ready and ramping up, they're, they're winding down the construction for the 2024 season and, and building back up their portfolio for 2025. So we're hopeful that, based on the bidding climate, the time of year, the timing of doing this, that the amounts would, so the first, I should also qualify this, that the bid that we received from Pro Builders was approximately $1.8 million, 1.9. So the $2.3 million takes in, we went line by line and considered each one of the amounts and adjusted it accordingly. And that's how we came up with an engineer's.
But, but the 1.8 bid was rejected because they didn't quite fill everything out, correct?
There was information that was missing as part of the bid. That's correct. There was about eight items that they missed.
Okay, 2.3 seems low, but we were going to do the trees, uh, before we did a lot of the stuff that you're talking about now. Why didn't that happen?
The trees are included as part of.
That part of it?
As part of the Phase 1B improvement. So we didn't want to remove the trees without the, having a plan in place to replant them.
Okay. I would rather see it start sooner. You know, me and Cat and Doug have been here for 40 years. You guys have been here for 60-plus, but.
But, no, 39 years.
We keep saying that we're coming, we're coming, we're coming, and I believe that we're certainly getting there, but, again, I'd just like to keep, keep things moving downtown if that's possible. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. I thought you were going to go for way longer.
I had plenty of time left.
Right? So a few questions. When you all put this out to bid, is there a not-to-exceed listed?
No, we, we provide an estimate, but we, it doesn't have a not-to-exceed amount. It's based on the lowest. We're, we're governed by public contract code.
Okay, got it. So surrounding this potential future grant funding, is that a potential earmark? Is that infrastructure dollars coming down the pike? Is that transportation? Like, why do you see that as in the runway?
That, that's a, that's a request for an earmark from Congressman Garamidi.
Okay. And is that the, is that the only possibility? Are there any other large funding, federal dollars that are coming down the pike, transportation, infrastructure, that we think would fit?
On the federal side, I'm not as averse on that. On the state side, I, we've, we continually work with the Long Transportation Authority as our advocate to, to bring funding and secure dollars within the region, and they have done a good job with that. The West Texas Project, that Complete Streets Project identified, that actually received $11 million of active transportation funds in 2020. So that is a good collaboration, a good partnership we have with them to continue to bring grant funds. And that, I would look towards something similar for, for this type of work.
Got it. From what I understand, you know, because we sit on regional boards, what, what makes City of Fairfield a standout is because we have shovel-ready projects. And that's why I think that's the secret sauce. I don't know if I should be saying that, but, yeah, I hear that's the secret sauce. Yeah, so, so if we have Option 1, that makes this project shovel-ready?
So Option 1 would be actually physically constructing Phase 1B. Council in June during the mid-cycle budget, we've actually shift, we've programmed funds for the design, $350,000 for the Corner project. Simply, I provided on past projects, when bids have come in high, one of the things could, that could potentially be an option would be combining, combining things, but that, that simply is just for consideration. The design work is progressing on Phase 2, which is the Corner Plaza. Yep.
Councilman Doug?
Yeah, this question's mainly for our city manager. I, I was speaking earlier upon how I went downtown Saturday night and it was just really nice and I'd like to see those, the improvements continue because the nicer we have the, the streets, the, the better businesses, we're going to pull into some of those empty spots and we all know that. Is there anywhere we can rob Peter to pay Paul or something to come up with that, you know, $785,000? I mean, is there any way we can add to that, go with implementation Option 1 without hurting too bad? Is it?
Yes, staff's identified where we can get the $785,000. That comes from Intergovernmental Loan Fund.
All right.
Which is, is kind of just a holding pot for us as well as AB 1600 Urban Design Fees.
I kind of suspected as much, but I'll entertain a motion for Option 1.
All right, let's go through the resolutions and we'll, is that okay?
That's okay.
All right, let's, can this, let's just go to, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 2024-232 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield Rejecting All Bids for the Heart of Fairfield Downtown Texas Streetscape Improvement Project Phase 1B Improvements.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. And so then, Resolution, this, yep.
So, the first one, which Resolution just did.
Yes.
As Option 1.
No, that, that Resolution was just to reject the bids.
Just reject the bid.
The previous.
The $3 million bid they're coming at us with, we don't, yeah.
All right.
Now my brain's shut down, right? So now we want to go with what you wanted, but does that fall under 2024-233, right? The update to the fiscal 2024-2025 budget, which would include the extra 700?
Yes.
All right. Okay. That's a motion, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is for Option 1?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, who seconded it? Doug?
I did.
Oh, I thought, okay. And who made the motion?
Doug.
Doug. Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor, we were unanimous. All right, we're done. Thank you, guys. That's all. As Patton would say.
Thanks for the guns.
Oh, you're welcome. Now, what am I?